Good evening, and welcome. The December 26, 2018 meeting of Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Muth, absent this evening. Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of Long Branch, to the citizens of Long Branch, to one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in a newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our first employee of the month. Our first employee of the month for January 2019 is Angie Towns. She's with the Health Department, and I'd like to ask her to please come forward. I'll turn this around. Angie Towns is Long Branch's most senior active employee. She's worked for the city for the past forty-eight years. She's always professional, friendly, and possesses in-depth knowledge and experience in all phases of registrar work. Her historical knowledge regards the city of Long Branch, its government, the Health Department, and all things registrar-related is unparalleled. She's a valued and treasured asset. Angie is a consummate professional. She works to establish a good relationship with each individual customer, the public, even under occasional difficult circumstances. Dealing with the public, funeral home directors, the birth records staff at Monmouth Medical and others, Angie has found that sometimes a good sense of humor is most useful and helps the medicine go down. Luckily for Long Branch, Ms. Towns is planning to continue working at Angie's register, City of Long Branch, for a few more years. When she does decide to retire, it will be with great sadness for her coworkers who will truly miss her presence. However, we will also be extremely proud of her work record, dedication to duty, and be happy for her. When that time finally arrives, we will say, "Well done, my good and faithful public servant," and hope that she has many, many great moments and years of living in her retirement. And it's with great pride that the City of Long Branch Mayor and Council present you with this certificate as our first employee of the month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. I'd like to thank everyone, Mayor, Council, Mr. Jackson, and all my friends and family. Thank you very much. And the wonderful people I've worked with for many years. And we're like family. We're not even, you know, employees, we're family. You know, it touches my heart that I received this, the first one. I can't believe it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Here we go. Happy New Year.
At this time, I would like to ask Captain Griffin, Chief Stout, and Chief Guddey to please come forward.
I'm going to call the firefighters up here if they're aware. Lieutenant Slattery, firefighters Fleming, not here. Firefighter Griffin, firefighter Bannock. Incident number eighteen, day sixteen eighty-seven, November twenty-third, twenty-one thirty hours. Lieutenant Kieran Slattery, firefighter Tom Fleming, firefighter Tim Griffin, firefighter Ken Bannock of the Uniformed Fire Division, were investigating a fire alarm on the fourth floor of Ten Pavilion Avenue. The crew, while investigating the alarm, found odor to be strongest near apartment four zero two. Firefighter Griffin tried the door, finding it unlocked. Upon entering the apartment, firefighters Griffin, Fleming, and Bannock found an unresponsive subject on a couch who was not breathing and had no pulse. The crew moved the subject to the floor, radioed the dispatch, and Lieutenant Slattery in the lobby for an ambulance and to bring up an EMS bag as they began CPR on the subject. An AED was applied administering two shocks, and the crew continued CPR until EMS arrived. The patient had regained a pulse before being transported to the hospital due to swift action, professionalism, and quality of care under these unusual circumstances that these men provided. City of Long Branch and the Fire Department Valor Awards Committee do hereby recognize Lieutenant Kieran Slattery, firefighters Tom Fleming, Timothy Griffin, Kenny Bannock of the Uniformed Fire Division for their team effort and bestow upon them a unit citation ribbon. I'll let this ribbon provide appropriate recognition for a job well done.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes of December twelfth, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the third reading of ordinance number twenty-seven eighteen, which was introduced on November twenty-eighth, 2018, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorized in the Execution of a Lease Agreement in Connection with Paracel and a Portion of Pier Village District of the Oceanfront Broadway Redevelopment Area." I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance twenty-eight dash eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending an Ordinance Establishing Titles and Setting Salaries for Certain Employees of the City of Long Branch for the Year 2018." This ordinance was introduced on December twelfth, 2018. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? If there is anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Request one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. I've noticed the inconsistency between the last time this ordinance occurred before the election in May and now, the inconsistency of Mayor Pallone and Councilwoman Selly. At that time, there was a dispute over the two positions of Public Safety Director and Police Chiefs, and the question being whether those two positions should be in place when most municipalities either have one or the other. In this city, by adopting ordinance twenty-eight eighteen tonight, you're literally codifying those two positions, and I object to that the way Mayor Pallone and Ms. Selly objected to that. Plus, at the time, I do recall there were problems as far as the Police Chief and the captains, five captains on the police force. So for that reason, that's the first reason I'm requesting a no vote on ordinance twenty-eight eighteen. Secondly, on the officers hired after December thirty-first, 2012, there's a bracket fifty-three thousand thirty-nine dollars to one hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars. It's quite a salary, but there's no title. Therefore, until the ordinance is properly complete to know exactly what the title is for one hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars, I don't think this ordinance should be entertained by the council. Thirdly, I have this position. It's a troubling position under non-union full-time positions. Can somebody on this council explain what a confidential assistant is from thirty thousand to eighty-eight thousand dollars? What is a confidential assistant? Nobody on the council can explain what a confidential assistant is. Does anybody on the council know what the qualifications are for a confidential assistant?
I'd like to have Mr. Renon answer that question.
Well, I'm asking the council.
Well, I'm asking, I'm telling you that if you want an answer, Mr. Renon will answer it.
The council is voting on this ordinance, not Mr. Renon.
It's a civil service title. There are, there are one of them in each department, so it's a civil service title of confidential assistant. It's an unclassified position.
What is the current salary of the confidential assistant we have?
There are a number of them, so I couldn't tell you all of their salaries.
The confidential assistant in the bracket of thirty thousand to eighty-eight thousand under the administrator's office?
I don't know what they're saying.
You don't know what the salary of it is? Well, I don't expect you to know. The council is to know. You're voting on this. Do you know what that salary is of the confidential assistant under the administrator's office? What is it? Everybody's nodding yes. What is it? Everybody nods yes, but nobody has the answer. Was this position advertised?
Yeah.
The position was advertised, and people in City Hall with experience were overlooked for this position at a salary of eighty-eight thousand. Can anybody on the council tell us where this administrative, this supposedly confidential assistant came from? Is no, but you won't say? I'll say it. The confidential assistant came from Eaton Town where your administrator came from. The confidential assistant worked for the administrator. One more question on this council. Again, I'm going to ask, was this position advertised? No answer. All right, I see absolutely no need for any adoption of this ordinance. I mean, you people just don't have a handle on this. It's a picking ordinance of titles and salaries and trying to ram it by the people with inconsistencies displayed by Pallone and Selly from the last time we visited these ordinances to questions on a confidential here that nobody, confidential assistant on eighty-eight thousand dollar salary that you can't come clean with answers on. You're not in a position to adopt this ordinance. I request the ordinance be polled or a no vote be done on ordinance twenty-eight eighteen.
I need a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? This is the third reading of ordinance twenty-eight eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending an Ordinance Establishing Titles and Setting Salaries for Certain Employees of the City of Long Branch for the Year 2018." I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law. Any motion? Anyone second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance twenty-eight eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance, City Code Chapter three forty-five of the City of Long Branch." This ordinance was introduced on December twelfth, 2018. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Is there anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Vincent Lepore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification for the record ordinance twenty-nine eighteen. Within it, three forty-five dash one zero two R one, one-family residential zone district in this ordinance, we have a minimum lot coverage of forty percent. Apparently, this is suited to accommodate Elberon. Whatever happened to the beachfront recreation zone to preserve the Elberon Oceanfront that I discussed several council meetings ago, the councilman Viera so much appreciated and liked? Where's that consideration in these ordinances tonight? But then we go on. Chapter three forty-five, Article four, West End Design Overlay, three G two F, and I'm going to read F. Institutional uses may utilize up to thirty-five percent of the basement area of the building for storage and/or accessory uses connected with the operation and/or function of the institutional use. Does anyone here on this council really believe that only thirty-five percent of the basement of the Monocum Shabbat will be used? There are religious institutions in this cities whose basements are one hundred percent used. Under land use definitions, the accessory use referenced here, accessory uses are uses of land that are found on the same parcel as the principal use but are subordinate or incidental. So in other words, council, incidental religious uses will be done for the basement at the Monocum Shabbat. I see absolutely no need, absolutely no additional beneficial use or positive to the West End from allowing subordinate or religious accessory use in the basement at the Monocum Shabbat building. To the point, the fact is, the Monocum Shabbat in the West End is a brutally oversized building that does not belong there, nor should its use have ever been permitted. The history of this building, with the Long Branch zoning board denying it, and in response to thirty-two thousand dollars in campaign contributions to Schneider campaign coffers, Team Schneider produced the West End overlay, overriding the zoning board denial, both Pallone and Selly being part of that Schneider team approval of the overlay. Actions against this overlay were respectively done by Lepore versus City of Long Branch and Kelly versus City of Long Branch, as well as challenges to two residential houses owned by the Monocum Shabbat of the West End for tax-exempt purposes, one at ninety-one Pullman, the other at five seventy-two Westwood, tax-exempt houses for the Monocum Shabbat. Shortly after being elected, you were informed Solomon Dweck would like to testify before this council on corruption of public officials in this city of which this property was concerned. As of tonight, Team Pallone still will not take up that offer of Solomon Dweck to testify to public official corruption in the City of Long Branch or the public official corruption involved with the Monocum Shabbat property, or the thirty-two thousand dollars in campaign contributions that went into the Schneider team coffers, in return Schneider providing the overlay. This tonight, this ordinance, is nothing more than Team Pallone continuing to rubber-stamp the way for the Monocum Shabbat. I request a no vote on ordinance twenty-nine eighteen.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? This is the third reading of ordinance number twenty-nine dash eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance, City Code Chapter three forty-five of the City of Long Branch." I need a motion to adopt on third and final reading and advertise according to law. Is there a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-eight eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter two nine three, Solid Waste and Recycling of the Code of the City of Long Branch, Bulky Waste." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for January ninth, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter two nine three, Solid Waste and Recycling of the Code of the City of Long Branch, Rough." I need a motion to introduce on the first reading and advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for January ninth, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance thirty-two dash eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing an Ordinance Authorized in the City of Long Branch to Leave Space for Fire Trucks from Privately-Owned Volunteer Fire Companies in the City of Long Branch." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set, set the public hearing for January ninth, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-three dash eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Granting a Five-Year Tax Exemption to David Sukoff for a Development Project on Property Located at Thirty-One Ocean Terrace and Designated as Block Three O Two, Lot Seventeen Point O Two." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for January ninth, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-four dash eighteen entitled, "An Ordinance Granting a Five-Year Tax Exemption to Marcelo Gruberg for a Development Project on Property Located at Ninety Ocean Terrace and Designated as Block Three O One Point O Three, Lot Twenty." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for January ninth, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to give anyone in the audience the opportunity to address the council. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Requesting one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Attorney Renon on ordinance twenty-seven eighteen, slick move. We noticed on the financial payouts for tonight, resolution three oh seven eight, McMenon Scotland Baumann, Pier Village Three, redevelopment area bond financing, first payment twenty-six sixty-five. I guess in your opinion, Mr. Renon, nothing's going to get in the way of Kushner. I put in an Oprah for those subdivision maps you referenced at the last council meeting on lot two twenty-two point zero one, lot two. In light of this slick move you made tonight, Mr. Renon, you best produce those subdivision Counsel, you've read the media, NJ.com, Associated Press nationally, Washington Post, reports Kushner companies have struck a deal on acquiring the properties of Lower Broadway from Long Branch Partners LLC. Broadway also being designated as a federal opportunity zone. I've got to make a couple of statements here about the amount of money to be made in the federal opportunity zone on Broadway. Jared Kushner, son of convicted felon developer Charles Kushner, has a twenty-five million dollar ownership in Cadre, a real estate investment company he co-founded, in which he will be investing in the Broadway Opportunity Zone. Kushner's intent to invest in this opportunity zone to defer federal taxes on capital gains to 2026 and then get a huge discount when the bill is due. Also, any gains from the new zone investments will be tax-free for at least ten years. I want you to hear this all again in summary. On Broadway, the Kushners have the following going for them. One, Jared Kushner gets returns on Cadre investments in Broadway. Two, Kushner companies will defer federal taxes on capital gains to 2026 and then get a huge discount when the bill is due by investing in Broadway. Three, any gains from Broadway Opportunity Zone investments for at least ten years won't be taxed. And there's a fourth benefit as well. The Opportunity Zone on the oceanfront, upon which Kushner companies is profiting from rising real estate values. There lies the flaw. In the federal opportunity zones on municipalities with twenty percent or better poverty rates, when instead, federal opportunity zones should be in the distressed areas of that municipality. It's nice racketeering. Keeping this all in mind, Ms. Wittes, during the campaign, at the debate, mayoral council debate, you stated there would be no future tax abatements. In fact, the whole image of Team Pallone was against tax abatements and pilots, despite two members, Pallone and Selly, voting for them on Kushner's Pier Village Three. Again, at the NJTV production of gentrification and quality of life, Mayor Pallone stated there will be no tax abatements. So here comes the question, counsel. With all the federal financial incentives coming the Kushner's way on the federal opportunity zone on Broadway, would there be a need for municipal tax abatements and pilots?
Or you have one minute.
Thank you. Question to the council. Will you deny Kushner municipal tax abatements and pilots for Broadway? Ms. Wittes?
I have no comment.
Ms. Selly?
No comment.
Mr. Dangler?
No comment, sir.
Mr. Viera?
I'll tell you what, Mr. Lepore. I've been here, I've been listening to you. You come in here and treat us like crap, and you want us to answer your questions?
Let me tell you something. You should know the answers to these questions.
From now on, I'm not going to answer none of your questions, no comment, so don't bother.
All right, so let me tell you, Team Pallone has no credibility because their campaign You should know the answers to these questions.
From now on, I'm not going to answer none of your questions, no comment, so don't bother.
All right, so let me tell you, Team Pallone has no credibility because their campaign was a campaign against no tax abatements, and you can't hold to your statements from your campaign on Kushner on Broadway. A new developer. The old developer is gone. No, you're wrong, Mr. Viera. You have no credibility with the rest of Team Pallone. You cannot commit to your campaign promises of no tax abatements. Trump government continues.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Patty Varaki, 246 Jerome Oakhurst. Well, I just wanted to make a comment concerning some of the zoning changes and stuff that you've been complying with and putting into place here. One, for example, with the Habad. I know that they're still under construction, and it would really make, in my opinion, I think, more sense to see what the traffic flow, the parking, and the whole redevelopment, if you will, the overlay zone is going to be like, once the constructions of those buildings that are being constructed now are. So it kind of seems to me that when there was all the planning and the discussions with what was going to be implemented, with what they were required with variances with the West End School, the Repertory Company, the Grubman property, it's just like by stepping all of that discussion and concerns by going ahead and giving them and other things within the city of Long Branch, the approvals before they're actually finished with construction and seeing how things are. That was one of my statements. The other thing I would like to point out is with the density. I know when we had the debates during campaigning, and there was also the time when there was the community discussions at the high school auditorium. There was a question asked about the city's master plan and how it needed to be redone. Is that coming up this year, I think? Okay. And I know that on several of the answers that were given concerning the master plan, it was very apparent that the Pallone team felt that the density was a big concern, the traffic was a big concern, the tax abatements were a big concern. And yet, you know, like I said, you're going ahead with allowing some of these ordinances to take place, even though the master plan really needs to be redone and things looked at. And the third thing I'd like to say, Lilian Grauman was not able to attend tonight, but she did want to thank the mayor and council for her appointment on the zoning board. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ernest Minnelli, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Born in Long Branch. I just wanted to say I come from time to time. I'm a little bit like Jerry Scorano. I kind of go between the two cities where I was raised. Born here, raised in Asbury and Long Branch. And what I'm noticing is a bit of a disconnect. I mean, some people come up here and they're pretty passionate. I can't really say that I always agree with how they deliver their comments, but I will say one thing. A lot of the comments are very good. They're very direct, they're factual. And what I'm noticing, instead of not being able to answer and say, "Well, I don't know the answer," or et cetera, it's sort of like, I don't know, go after the delivery of the person, which I guess, you know, I'm talking about Mr. Lepore now. I know him for a few years, and I will say one thing. He's passionate. There's no question about it. There aren't many people I know that dig into details and facts like he does. He's pretty good. He's pretty good. The thing is, I think, I've seen him go through a horrible, rough time. I mean, I've seen him arrested here, I've seen him lose all his money from the lawsuits by the city of Long Branch, bankrupt him, and then he sort of gets treated like, you know, "Why are you like that, Mr. Lepore?" But you have to look, you always have to look at the history of Long Branch and what it's done to activist people. I won't say I'm in that category, but certainly he is. And, for example, you know, his delivery on that system of the use of the Brighton and Ocean property, it's very, very cogent, it's very important. And yet, you know, when he puts it before the council or the business manager or the city attorney, it's just like a can down the road to the next meeting. So then he comes back and he's more persistent, and then it starts to get personal. And I don't know why that is. I don't know why he draws that ire. He's asking simple, basic questions. For example, should an overlay building be allowed to exceed 35% use of the basement? That's important, because what it's really saying is, "We told you one thing, but now that it's being built, we want to do another. And then in addition, we want some tax abatements and tax extensions, and we want to use it more, and we're going to bring more people." And that's how things tend to happen in Long Branch. And Mr. Lepore is spot right on about that. So am I near my last minute?
Not yet, sir.
Really? Okay. So the question is, why is it that he can't get an answer? I don't get it. Why is that? Like, when he asked about the salary of a confidential assistant, it's sort of like there's a silence. I mean, that's your business, isn't it? I mean, you have a business manager here. These things should be coming right back to him. So he gets frustrated, and then you get frustrated with him. But listening objectively from the audience, I tend to side a little bit more, he wants facts, we want facts. And, you know, you say, "Well, you know, you're asking too much," or "We don't like how you're asking, so we're not going to answer you." Well, I don't think that's why you were elected, to take that. You got to give us a little bit of the benefit of the doubt, right? Sometimes we're a little persistent. Maybe you don't want to give up some information. I'm very interested in the police force here, how you arrived at the chief you arrived at, how you arrived at the testing, how you arrived at a public safety director arrested a citizen here and nothing ever happened, other allegations. Everything seems to just get put aside, and they say, "Well, it's Mr. Lepore." Well, it could be anybody. And we all, a lot of us experience problems with the police department here. I mean, if you look at the news, I mean, if it's not a police officer from Long Branch, it's someone who lives in Long Branch who works for the Deal Police, and someone who... So all these surrounding departments are having tremendous problems. I call it the triangle of crime. It's Neptune, Asbury Park, and Long Branch. Now, you look at the data, it's irrefutable. I don't care how many hotels you build, et cetera. The schools aren't safe, there's tremendous crime and murder, there's too many high-ranking police, not enough people on the street. I mean, how much more brass does Long Branch need? Think about it. I, at least I know, and I've learned from very astute people like Mr. Lepore and his analysis, I think it's half the...
Thank you.
That's it?
Minnelli.
Thank you.
Time is up. Thank you.
My name's Linda Swinby, and I live at 157 Summeth Avenue, Gregory School Apartments. I want to respond to your questions, sir. I'm not sure that I'm in the right position to say something, but I'm going to say it, and you can stop me any time you want. Mr. Lepore has stood before this council. He has a right to ask questions, no doubt about it. Nope, not a problem. But this council and our mayor has tried to answer his questions, and when they try to answer his questions, he does not want to have to hear. Our mayor has, at least three times since he's taken, become mayor, has reached out to Mr. Lepore to answer his questions, to meet with him privately, and he has refused his questions. So, you know, it's, the council is not to be blamed, and our mayor is not to be blamed for that. Sorry. But anyway, that's all I'm going to say about that. But I am here to say thank you to the council. Since Mayor Pallone has taken office, I have seen dilapidated houses being fixed, remodeled, the outside being beautified, one across from Gregory, the house on the corner, across from where I live. Houses in the community being beautified, remodeled, fixed up, which, when I first came here, wasn't such a thing, didn't exist. Which I want to say to Public Works Stan and his crew at Public Works, they are fantastic. They do the best job possible, since I've been here and complained, and maybe other people have complained also, that our street and our side of town is getting cleaned up, and it's staying cleaned up. You know? It's one thing I would like to see, a little more cooperation from the community on, you know, the Public Works comes in and picks up this stuff, and this summer, maybe an hour later, there's leaves on the streets piled, you know? So if there could be some way that maybe the community could work with, or Public Works, or work a little better to develop a schedule or somehow with the community to come together so when the garbage day is, that the leaves are raked up or done, you know? So it doesn't have to be, you know, when they pick it up and then sometime later, it's, the leaves are there, and it's there for a few days or whatever until the next pickup. You know? So anyway, I think you and the mayor is doing a great job, the council, you're all great, you know? So, you know, keep doing what you're doing. You're doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. Do they have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
There are no applications. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Dangler for any comments.
Yes, my comment during the holiday season. I hope everyone have a blessed and certainly safe travels visiting their families and going back home. And this New Year's Eve, while people are taking part possibly in little cocktails and libation, do it moderately and call Uber so there, you know, there's no tickets, the police have enough on their hands. But seriously, just do it in moderation and have a designated driver if that is possible. And again, hope everyone gets back home safely after they enjoy time with their families.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
Yes, I'd like to thank Angie. She's gone, but all those years of service for the city of Long Branch, it's great. I also like to thank the fire department for honoring their best. They're doing a great job in our city, and I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year and thank you for coming.
Councilwoman Selly?
I too would like to thank Angie Towns. I've worked with her, and she's a wonderful person. All our employees should be that dedicated. To the firemen, thanks for a great job. You always do a good job and make us look good. Today is Kwanzaa. Happy Kwanzaa for those of you who celebrate, and also happy new year to everybody. Thank you.
Mayor Pallone, would you like to say something?
Yes, Council President, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, good, thanks. I'd like to say hello to everyone. So I'd like to personally recognize the outstanding work of our firefighters who were honored tonight. You know, we're all very fortunate to have such highly skilled and caring professionals serve our community every day. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Tonight, we also recognize our employee of the month, Angie Towns, for the month of January. Congratulations, Angie. Thank you for everything that you do and have done. We plan on highlighting a different employee every month, and selections are chosen by city employees. Our goal is to honor employees for all their hard work and service in the city of Long Branch. This initiative was the idea of Council President Rose Wittes, and thank you, Rose, for that. At the next meeting on January 9th, we'll be recognizing employees who have had longevity and the retirees of 2018, and we hope that you'll join us at the next meeting to celebrate these employees and all they've done for the city. On another note, I just wanted to mention that the council adopted a resolution this evening that will save over $35,000 in brokerage services for health benefits in 2019, and based on the request for proposals, the city anticipates that that same quality of services will be offered to its employees at much less brokerage fee. Also, tonight, the council approved the lease agreement in connection with a new carousel that's going to be open next summer in Pure Village. I just wanted to mention that the terms of this agreement state that all Long Branch students will pay half the regular ticket price. The carousel will also be required to be open seven days a week between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and at least on weekends between May 1st and Memorial Day, and weekends between Labor Day and October 31st. I wanted to thank the council again for negotiating that. Just a couple of little side notes. You'll notice that the council chambers were recently decorated with historical photos there. We invite you to take a look on the wall there. There's photographs of Long Branch famous summer hotels and descriptions that go along with it, and we hope to continue to bring more historical pieces to City Hall whenever we can. I wanted to also say that we have a weekly email blast every Friday. You can sign up through our website at visitlongbranch.org. Our weekly email blast is information for all our departments, event and program flyers, and all information that is Long Branch related. We also, the city of Long Branch also launched a new Facebook page last week called Long Branch Office of the Mayor. This Facebook page will be monitored by the administration office. Residents are encouraged to like the page by finding it in the search bar on Facebook. And the mission of this Facebook page, and I must credit to some of the people who are in the audience here who asked for this sort of thing, is to increase public relations and to engage in conversation and dialogue with the public in the format of polls and questionnaires and things like that. So this page will also provide nostalgic posts for the city of Long Branch's history. We also have some fun ideas that we'll try to incorporate as well. It will be kept up as up-to-date as possible and all interesting information that is Long Branch related. I also wanted to mention that beginning next month, council workshop meetings will start at 5:30 PM instead of 6 o'clock. Our first meeting in January will be on January 9th, so that will start at 5:30. And we noticed that we often need more time, so we're starting a half hour earlier. The regular meeting will continue at the same time. And so finally, I just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Happy new year to all, and the best to all of your families, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would like to wish everyone a happy new year, and thank you for coming out and expressing your concerns and being part of the community. I hope you have a great evening. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any...
Aye.
Thank you, and have a good night.